Okay, I call the Dixon County Commission to your order. Please stand for the flag, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, being indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we do have several additions to our agenda today. In fact, we have five. First one is consider resolutions to adopt the bylaws for the board of the sewer district number three. Consider appointing a KAC voting delegate, first alternate and second alternate. Review and consider approval of Moran memo- memorandum-
Understanding.
-of understanding with Potawatomi County for the Fish Passage Grant. Review and consider agreement with KDOT on the each portion of the Safety Edge High-Risk Grant Project and to sign a letter of engagement to do a single audit. So with those additions, I move that we approve the agenda.
Second.
I move the second in all favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. We have the consent agenda, minutes of the July 25 work session and regular meeting, payroll of $230,927.45, added tax of $114.22, abatements of $135,250.92, and wire payments of $9,406.31. Move it, please. Set agenda.
Second.
Okay, so I've been moved to second in all favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Commissioners comments and committee reports. Lynn, did you have anything this week?
Just about the only thing that did come up, I attended a retirement dinner that they had for Pat Murray and she was from the North Central Kansas Mental Health. And they had for just friends and family and board members and so on. And so it was kind of an informal gathering in a way and had a chance where some people made some comments and, you know, that's, they really, in a very positive way impacted North Central Kansas and the program has grown and under her leadership. And so, anyway, that was, that was really the only event that I happened to attend. And I had a conflict the other night when they had the sewer district meeting on Detroit Sewer District, so I didn't attend that, but...
Yes, Craig and I attended and you want to get a report?
Go ahead.
Well, I thought it was a very good meeting. Like I say, I thought our staff did a good job of presenting what's the progress and the financials on it and, like I say, that's kind of good to see that project getting completed now. And the only concerns that I heard from the public was just, of course, with the recent rains, some of the trenches that they had put lines in maybe have settled and needed to come back and the contractor was, was there and assured them that everything would be put back, regravelled and bills would be made, so. It's been all hand.
I echo that too. I thought it went real well. I thought everybody was happy with it. I went to Beloit for the North Central Kansas Regional Plant Information. We went, met at the campus on Beloit, they call it NCK Tech now, real nice, look that they've got it. We met there, the president gave a half hour presentation on it and affordability of what I'm looking at and what I consider affordable, you know. When I went to college, it's not, but it's a lot cheaper than going to college, but really progressive for the enrollment at Beloit, it's 350 and they have capacity of 600 and then they've got a campsite haze now for 250 people.
Wow.
Really important part of Beloit and really get a lot back in the community with a lot of the stuff they do, that's all.
Okay. Well, like I say, it's a big day, the parade this afternoon, fair getting going out there and like I say, we're looking forward to all that this week and, like I say, it's, hopefully the rains will not flood us out. Maybe we got the rain behind us right now, so it'll be a great time for everybody to be able to go out there and participate in it.
Joe, I understand too, and Brad, you might want to comment on it or maybe you were anyway, but that the county has been offering some assistance and manpower and equipment and so on and perhaps the city has because of the muddy conditions and trying to-
Yeah, every year typically we'll give a request for a little bit of help, but nothing like this year. They called first thing Monday morning, we're needing a loader and we offered the loader and operator, but then they ended up, they were pulling equipment into the carnival, needed some help getting it in and they were able to accomplish it, didn't need that. But Martin spent, I know he had two dump trucks all day yesterday hauling wood chips from the transfer station out there to put throughout the carnival ground so that it would absorb the moisture and have a base to walk along for people. And I don't know how many loads they took, but they ran all day long, so. And, yeah, we've done whatever we can and the city is, they use some of their resources as well and trying to help them out, so.
And, you know, this really isn't, I don't know if we ever considered a tourism type event, but when you look at all the people that come in, it's, it's a great event and a big week for a lot of people throughout the county and so I'm glad we had that partnership that we could help them out because that's, you know, the rains were, were almost unprecedented, but...
Yes, but it, it did a wealth of good for the farmers out in rural areas. It's just unbelievable how much better it's going to help to fall crops this rain. And like I say, maybe we've broken the drought maybe a little bit by this, but actually the flooding didn't really get as bad, I think, because we were so dry, the ponds held a lot of water, the grounds soaked in a lot of water. And so, like I say, I really think that those two factors helped the flooding situation in our areas.
Oh, yeah, it's wonderful rain, or rains.
Yeah.
I don't know if we had this much rain last year for June, July, August total is what we picked up, so this is-
Like I say, we-
Catches us up some.
We're very fortunate to... Okay, ready to move on to presentations and petitions, proclamations and other public comments? We have none today. Brad, so you go ahead and start your report.
Okay, last week we discussed just briefly some concerns that we had that had been reported over the area of photography and the cost of that. And since I had Sherry pull some statistical reports and I thought it was kind of interesting worth noting that on an average, we run just a little over 3,000 hits to our website per month to the GIS, to the aerial photography section of people that using that. That's just through the website from the public, obviously it doesn't, doesn't include what we use on a daily basis here, but I thought that was working, certainly worth noting that that is something that is used tremendously, so. Just an update on Monday, Martin, John and I went up and met with Frank and Neil Township, their board, along with several residents of the Curtis Creek area regarding the subdivision up there. Had a very positive meeting with them for a little more than an hour, hour and a half. And at the conclusion of the meeting, why they, I think we've kind of worked it out to, they worked it out to where we have since hauled a couple of roads around for the township and they'll pay us, you know, for that and dropped off up there and they were able to get one of the local residents there that has a skid steer that will help pay him for time and, or time and fuel to work those roads in there and take some care of some of their, their issues on those two little roads within the subdivision. And by the time we left, I think things, people were shaking hands and were smiling on faces, so hopefully that worked out for the plus, so. And we also were able to talk to them about some signings and stuff up there that, that we'll be working on from the county side and so. But it's always good to get face to face with people and it seemed like you get a lot better done than, than my email or by phone, so. Update on the Fish Passage Grant. You have added to your agenda the MOU between Dickinson and Potawatomi Counties. Potawatomi County has it on their table today as well for their meeting as we speak. And we've got that all finalized between the county legal staffs of both counties. And since last week, U.S. Fish and Wildlife has approved that and it was simply needing to be last requirement to be sent to the Denver office for final posting, which is beyond the approval, but it's just, according to Mr. Stansell, is just a formality where once it's posted in the system, then it's finalized. They actually had increased the amount just slightly over what we originally had, had listed, so we're looking at just a little over about $115,000, give or take a little bit on that particular grant. And so, again, Potawatomi County lack is our fiduciary conduit, if you will, since they have the account with the Department of the Interior and they've agreed to do that for an administrative fee, which we've agreed to, so we're very appreciative to them for doing that, otherwise we wouldn't have been able to accomplish that. So hopefully we can return the favor to them someday, so. And we'll add that on the action items when we get to it.
Yeah.
You've got your year-to-date staffing reports. We have had, of course, there for a while, we had some losses, but we have been able to hire, fill a couple of the empty spots. Majority of them are in the jail, as you can see. As I reported to you, I think, last week, we were able to hire the childcare licensing person and WIC inspector of the Health Department. And since this came out, starting tomorrow, Russ has hired or filled the vacancy for his 911 dispatcher that he authorized. We had one opening there, so, and that person starts tomorrow in training, so. I think we still have possibly one opening in the jail that Garrett has to fill or he's looking at, but now they're pretty close to being full staff, so, if not a full staff. It seems like the jail, I talked to the sheriff yesterday, it seemed like the jail's been kind of a tough one here the last couple of months for some reason, so. If you have any questions on that, I'll try to answer them, but it looks pretty straightforward, so. On our 2013 overlay project, I'm very happy to report that they started at 8:30 this morning putting asphalt down at Union Road and K4. The, Martin called me and they were going to try yesterday and they had problems with the mid-bash plant, didn't fire up, so they got it going this morning. They have 17 trucks hauling asphalt, which is a lot, and they're going to be moving up K4 and then over up Union Road, K4 north. They'll jump over the key and get it done and then they'll come into the northern part of the county, so. Looks like they're going to be hitting it double time to try and get within their time constraints, but we've got, obviously, inspectors down there and I think he was the one that was working with Martin to make sure they got it going well, so. Hopefully within, if they don't get most of Union Road done today, they should probably finish it tomorrow and the people down in that area will have a nice smooth road to drive on, so, to get up to the, to the fair in the next few days, so. I did send a letter to, well, we'll get back, a month or two ago, I was contacted by Stan Norman, was the New Trail Fellowship Church in Grant Township. And as you know, they're, the church is looking at building a new church out off of Jeep Road on 2400 Avenue. And through that process and the applications for the building permits and things, we discovered that there, the fence along the north side of that township road, the right of way actually is quite a bit farther north than that fence and there's one sign that sits out there, billboard sign that is about a third on the public right of way. Well, that all needs to be removed so they can improve that road and switch it from a path, basically, to gravel. And so the fence needs to be moved back, West Star has to move a couple poles, which Grant Township's been working with them to get all that accomplished, but the one issue was the fence, or I'm sorry, a sign that's there that needs to be removed and redelegated. And they were having difficulty getting the signing company to respond to them, from lack of a letter summarization. So I did call the sign company last week. They did not call me back. I sent them a certified letter yesterday and gave them the timeframe to get ahold of us, so we're going to have to remove the sign, so. Just wanted to make you aware of that, because if you hear anything on that, on that topic, so.
Refresh my memory, the, the road that went down there, it kind of into the Scanlon's old place down there?
It went down to the bottom of the, the draw where I don't know if it ever really crossed.
Okay.
It was never a through road, it was more of a minimum maintenance.
So Grant-
And then it came up the hill up south of Scanlon's, yes.
Yeah, because he's called it Old Augusta Road.
Yes, yeah.
So the township's, I didn't know, who's going to pay for the rock gravel on there?
Township, it's all township and the church, yeah.
I know, I know, I didn't know if the township would be willing to bring the road up to maintenance. I didn't know if it was ever minimum maintenance or if it was ever done with that road.
You know, I don't know what it's actually classified, but I know their intent is from the church entrance to the east.
They got to come off Jeep Road?
Yes.
Okay, there's another word.
It's not going to go on through.
Okay, that's what I, I had people talk to me that they were concerned they were going to be able to come in then from the west.
Not from the west.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
It'll all be off Jeep Road, yeah. So, but to be able to remove that fence, we need to get the sign-
Yeah, right.
So the fence is in the right of way or the road?
The fence is actually out on the, you know, 20 feet on the public right of way and for the last 75 years, it really hasn't mattered because nobody really knew, well, since they put in the interstate, I guess, we probably right of way, we would have been purchased so in the 60s, but now that we've actually gone out and checked it and we need to really widen that road and make it wide enough to gravel it, we've discovered that it's all too far south, so at least they move back north, so.
Is there any liability to removing the signs or is that more just their responsibility that we just have to take it out in a workmanlike manner and-
It's their responsibility, they're permitted through KDOT. You know, we're doing everything we can, I don't know, I didn't probably defer to Doug as far as liability, it comes down to, they just absolutely refuse to do anything. Whether we'd have to get an order or whether we'd just take it out, so.
Well, we have both options. And we can take it out without interference while we can, if we need to get a court order, we can do that.
Hopefully we won't have to cross that.
Hopefully you give us the response back from the sign company stating what they're willing to do.
Right.
They let us take it out or they take it out.
Well, I can assure them if we take it out, it's probably not going to be in a condition to go back up somewhere, so. And it's not a big sign.
Right, yeah, I know. But it's, but they, they could move it back on the private land if-
That's an issue that's between them and the property owners.
I see.
I don't know, you know, the property has changed hands now from, from the previous owner to the church. Don't know that the church wants the sign there, but I know during previous discussions, the previous owner has land on the west side of Abilene along the interstate and he was present in the conversation, he said, "I'll let them, we'll put the sign over on that side if they want." So the sign company just needs to work it out with, with the farmer that owns that property and for some reason they haven't been willing to communicate with the church to try and get that going, so we kind of got involved as a heavier hand to try and get a response back from them, so. Hopefully it'll work out, if not, we'll, I'll work with Doug and we'll get something done, so. We discussed earlier, I guess, about us helping out the fair. We've been hauling wood chips and stuff this week and I haven't been out there, but I know they've got a lot of wood chips from the landfill, which is really a plus for us because we don't have to dispose of them or burn them because people bring them out, but I think we've hauled about everything we've got and hopefully that will help them out. Again, with the rain and when we're all done there, we can do the inverted Indian rain dance, so it doesn't rain for a while, but as I reported to you on an email earlier this week, you know, we were watching the rivers, Chancey's been watching that, where the rain that got, that hit north and west of us at the same time is just now getting down to us, so the rivers were still coming up last night. Hopefully enough time has gone by, it looks like we're going to have a good day today. If the rain that comes, that they're predicting tonight comes and it comes in an moderate method, that we'll be able to handle that. If we get the heavy showers that we did, then we'll likely have some issues, so. But, you know, there's not a lot we can do about it, we'll just deal with it as it gets here. We didn't experience too awfully much flooding that was detrimental in our county.
That's why I say, nothing like Slade County is-
Yeah, so. And to my knowledge, we really didn't have any roads closed, other than maybe temporary while it ran off, so we did pretty good, so. The road crews are taking advantage of the moisture on the, on the county roads. We've had raining with gravel roads since the other day and we also got the motor running full, full speed ahead, so they'll be able to get quite good accomplished, especially if the weather stays like today, it's beautiful out, so. The last thing I didn't have on the list that I wanted to mention, I had emailed you all, but our staff did have a meeting with KDOT and the City of Abilene on the closing of the exit ramp at I-7 and K-15 coming up, that construction project, we talked to Doug Zuny Barter about last week. And it looks like KDOT's amenable to allowing the city and the county to work, put some signs out to get the exit, to exit people to Abilene on, ahead of town on, when it's east, it'll be a fair road and when we're, when they close on the westbound side, it'll be Jeep Road, so that people can have the opportunity to come through Abilene as opposed to driving past and then expect them to come back to, to, to the retail market, so.
Yeah, that's a much better plan.
Yeah, so, you know, kudos to, and thanks to KOD for working with us on that and it looks like that's going to work out.
But we will, the city or we will have to put those signs up?
The city, it looks like the city's going to have about 99% of them to do, so, because everything is, is within the city limits that will be put up on Fair Road in the south and the city's agreed to put the, with permission of KDOT, to put the tokens out on the interstate as well, so. Doesn't look like we'll have a whole lot to do at this point, at least on this phase of it. Now, when we get to the Jeep Road portion, we'll help the city out and put some out on Jeep Road since that's our jurisdiction, so. Just touching on the items that you added to the agenda, of course, we have the resolution to adopt the amended bylaws for sewer district numbers three. I'll kind of go through the amendments when we get to that. We do have the form to appoint a voting delegate to the KAC and the first and second alternate that we can, will need to do, you have the MOU for Potawatomi County. And then I've got the final agreement for the east portion of the Safety Edge Project with KDOT. Again, that's just their standard form that says that we, what we'll do, what they'll do and that we'll accept the money, use it in an appropriate fashion as it's intended. And then we have the letter for, the engagement letter with the auditors, that's all I've got.
Okay. Doug, did you have anything for us today?
No, we got the tax sale working its way through, about a half a dozen of those parcels that have been redeemed by the owners.
Oh, they have, yeah.
But we're still moving forward with it and will on track probably for a fairly late fall sale. That's all I've got.
Or if you might check that I've got all of them signed. I don't, I say, whether the page deck together or not. Okay. Notices and communications. This is KDT. It's a letter that I'll give to you, Brad, I imagine. It just states that, that there is supposed to be a maintenance manual provided to the operator for the Detroit sewer system, again, to follow. This is from our health and sewer provider. Basically just- stating that the- as far as making payments and everything, that, that we do it in a timely manner and- Yeah, basically that's what it says. Yeah, and this is, this is from Randall, from the Kansas Association of Counties. And it also has a form for voting delegates that we-
That's the same thing, I've got three.
Yeah.
Could you fill that away, I've got one.
All right. And this is from the Central Kansas Free Fair stating that the livestock sale will be held on Monday, August 5th at 9:00 a.m. and the, for the people that will be bidding, it will be at lunch, providing, starting at 9 o'clock for the buyers. And this is K Works, their news, their newsletter. And this is Public Kansas Association of Counties, if we want to nominate somebody for the service.
Actually, I don't get some, three years of service and we're not giving that to Dianes, so.
Okay.
Where they get recognized for their years of service, that's a different, yeah.
Oh, okay, this is-
I give it to Dianes, so that they, that's where they recognize the employees for their years of service at the conference, so.
Right.
Yeah, so that's taken care of, too.
Okay. Okay, I guess we're ready to move on to consideration of resolutions. And we have a resolution to adopt the bylaws for the, for the board of the sewer district number three. I think we, you've emailed ourselves, we've had a chance to look over them.
I have, I did email you, there was a little bit of a change in them last night and that included the, basically the, what happens if a person fails to pay.
Okay.
And then some of the regulations or operating procedures that the board had adopted, for example, don't put grease down your sewer and things like that. So really, the, the bylaws are, they're all the same as what the board had adopted, we're just kind of getting them all filed through, you know, I had them emailed to. And then the, as far as the service, if a person fails for 90 days to pay, then anything that's past due on August 1st of the following year will be assessed to the property taxes. Kind of difficult to go out and turn off their sewer, so, but that's the, that's a copy of it and-
With being impossible, will they?
Mike it.
Yeah. Which was pretty fast.
I'll go ahead and move that we adopt resolution 080113 and that's to adopt the amendment on the bylaws for the Dickinson County Sewer District number three.
Second.
Okay, so I've been moved to second in all favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Do we just have the one to sign or?
Yeah.
Just the one? Okay. I guess we'll wait and see where Doug shows up on that.
Doug's not, Doug McKinnon won't be here today.
He won't be?
No. No, he called, took him in the building, make it so.
Okay. But you've, you've got the...
Yeah, I'm getting to him over here, so.
Okay.
If you want to go and do that.
Point before we vote a delegate, we're gonna leave that out.
No, we need to come back to all those. Yeah, let's just go, let's just go ahead and go down our list and do this last thing.
Well, unless, did he want to leave?
Well...
Yeah, I'd do it home with rain.
We can go ahead and do this, and come back to those. But, yeah, the MOU... That's not too long, why don't you just go ahead and read that in?
It looks kind of long.
I know, he's reading it.
Yeah, this is the memorandum of understanding that we have between the board of county commissioners of Dickinson County. And it's also gonna be with, referred to as the Navar Lions Club on behalf of the Navar community area of 1022 Mink Road, Hope, Kansas. And the parties state as follows. Navar is interested in the development and completion of a community facility to serve the Navar area, including parts of Logan, New Bern, Eastern Jefferson, and Northern Ridge Township in Central Dixon County. Navar has organized a motivated group of volunteers committed to the project who will provide the labor and equipment with the CANSTEP program, identified as a source of funding, materials, design, and inspection of services for a renovation of a community facility in or near Navar. The county is impressed with the effort put forth by the Navar Lion Club's members in the Navar community area, as well as the tremendous commitment of motivated volunteers for the project, and therefore, the county is willing to service an applicant for the project. The point number three is, the county will execute the necessary documents to assist Navar in the 2014 CANSTEP pre-application process. Funds received dedicated for the Navar project will be administered by the county on behalf of Navar. The county will assist Navar with the application process and the administration of funds, if any, received from the 2014 CANSTEP application. Navar will provide volunteers committed to the project and will provide labor and equipment with the CANSTEP program to complete the project to the satisfaction of the county and the state pursuant to the Community Development Block grant. In turn, Navar will provide at no cost to the county space for the county EMT ambulance services, as may be needed from time to time at Navar. The parties state the memorandum of understanding is set forth of this above agreement between the county and Navar, and it would be executed this day upon approval, which would be the first of August, 2013. And kind of figure benefit, maybe you have a copy of it, but the CANSTEP, it's actually the acronym, it's K-A-N is what they refer to it as, all capital letters.
Good, I move that we approve this memorandum of understanding.
Second.
It moves a second, all affairs say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried.
Thanks again, too, for what your community is doing with this.
You, you gotta put your signature on there, too.
If you want a copy of the, I was told to bring it, but...
Yeah, we're just gonna copy it.
Yeah.
Do you want a copy of that memorandum?
Yeah, that's probably off, too.
Yeah, Doug, you need a copy.
Oh, I guess if you sign this...
Yeah, I'll sign that in a paper.
We might have jumped quick, I don't know if you had any comments you wanted to make, or I know you did.
No, I had a short notice of getting, getting my list together. But we got, we got like twenty-six people on there, so.
That's good.
You know, did that in a very short time, so.
Yeah, she'll make some copies.
Well, I hope, you know, we'll be successful on this application. Because it's your great effort that the Navar community is doing, and your Lions Club, you know, have to sit and step forward.
Well, we got these up before it becomes a dead horse.
Well, I'll say that these, these buildings need to... Like I say, if you don't fix them up, they deteriorate worse, so it's a...
Like a, a good, a good picture of a building that's been well taken care of is up in Morganville, the Clay Center. Had a daughter wedding dinner afterwards, and next morning opened presents. And they've done a lot of work to that old gym. And I don't think it's been used since the, probably the same time Navar was closed. And boy, and that gym's like three times the size of Navar's. Big gym.
But this will work for community events and receptions like that, or...
Yeah, that's what they're using that for, but I guess the city of Morganville's taking care of it. Looks good. I'm just glad we don't have that big building to do.
Do you want the original back, or you want just a copy?
Just a copy, and then you'll get that to Doug.
I'll give Doug the original then.
This is my copy. So, all right, and then I get Doug's for our next step.
Yeah, well, we hope this, like I say, gets approved, and next year we can look forward to getting some progress done.
I got, I got one guy, Gary Anderson, did the confidence a bit, that's kind of work he likes to do.
Really?
I gotta turn him loose. All right, thanks a lot.
Thanks for your efforts, thanks for coming out today.
Yeah, I guess only other question is ownership. Is the Lions gonna keep the ownership for this, or are we gonna let the county have it?
I would assume the Lions Club will probably keep it, unless there's a requirement, we would better be asking.
All right, okay.
All right. Okay. You know, we can go back. Our next agenda, agenda item would be appoint a voting delegate, first alternate and second alternate.
I move Lynn be first alternate, and Laverne Meyer be second alternate.
And you'll be the delegate?
Yeah. No, you'll be the voting delegate.
Well...
No, I'm sorry.
Did they want three?
No, I'm sorry.
Did they want three?
Lynn will be the voting delegate, Laverne will be the second, first, and I'll be the second.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm Ms. Redrad.
Sounds good.
Second, I guess.
All right. We have to move along here, yeah.
Oh, go without me, you sign it, because you're the one who wants to sign it.
Oh, okay.
On favor of that motion, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, now we do have the, the MOU with Potawatomi County on the Fish Passage Grant. I've read through that, it looks very straightforward, I didn't see anything...
So we have Brad give it this, well, you kind of summarized it already, but...
Yeah.
It's basically the agreement between us and Potawatomi County that they will utilize their certification, if you will, for receiving federal funding on a project like this to accept the money. The federal government and these programs, Department of Interior can only disburse money or dispense money out to an agency that's pre-registered. We were not pre-registered in this program, although we're going through the hens now to do that, but we will have our certification in time for the deadline of this program. So the U.S. Fish and Wildlife personnel suggested that we get with Potawatomi County, because they were and use them as our broker, for lack of a better term, to get this money for us, and then they will hand it down to us for our projects. The projects are all listed in our county, in our name. Potawatomi County simply being the recipient of the funds to pass it on to us. And they do have a $2,000 administrative fee that they will, they will receive for their troubles, so. And that's basically it, so.
But my understanding, they will receive the money, but then they will transfer the money to us?
They will transfer the money to us.
So we will be paying the bills through Dixon County?
That's correct, you know, so they don't have to go through any other, any other headaches or work out of just receiving and transferring. And all the paperwork for the project and reports will come through us, too.
Right, and then Potawatomi County, I keep a copy of it for their records and stuff, because they'll pass your agency.
They really, they're, on their part, they won't have that much paperwork?
That's our goal, that they won't have a whole lot to do, yeah.
Well, I think that was their concern, too.
And this work will be done at, location wise?
There's four locations in our county, down and around Hope and that. In the southeast portion of the county that are within the Tepic Shiner Habitat.
Yeah, there's a map that shows the addresses of the...
Now, these are all just, would these all be replaced with culvert bridges or small bridges?
Uh, I believe they're small bridges.
You think they're all small bridges?
I believe so.
I'll go ahead and make the motion that we approve this memorandum, memorandum of understanding with Potawatomi County for this Fish Passage Grant.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all affairs say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried.
I also thought probably next week, or I may wait a couple weeks when the person's back, and we'll build a letter from you guys to Pot County thanking them for doing that, because they certainly didn't have to.
Right.
And I really, really appreciate it, so.
What I started, that's for him to sign, I start signing both of those. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I just had the one to sign here?
No, it should be...
This one that says, "Sign here," right here.
Well, I got it on the wrong.
She can wipe that out, replace that page.
Yeah. I didn't turn it, I didn't turn it with the...
You might need more than one ink pen today, because...
I've used COVID ink already.
Try to sign about a hundred times.
Yeah, yeah. Replace that page, I think I got that in mine.
Like I say, they're signing their copies on that, you know, about the same time, too, today during their meeting, so.
And this is...
Next item.
The next item, next item.
Is your KDOT?
This is a KDOT agreement. And this, the east portion of the safety edge, high-risk grant, and this is on the forty...
Yes, if you, just kind of in, in background, we, if you recall, we applied for the safety edge project several years ago from Solomon, Claire and Chapman. And we actually, at John Joff's suggestion, which ended up to be a very good one, we divided it into two projects in case there wasn't enough money to fund the whole thing. We didn't get turned down in total. They granted us the west portion from Solomon to Abilene. And then they had some more funding late into fiscal year, so they had us reapply for Abilene to Chapman. And this is the agreement for that portion with KDOT. And essentially, it's their boilerplate agreement that says that we'll use the money for what is intended, that it'll be used for this particular project, what we will do, what they will do, the percentage, which is a ninety-ten percentage on the HRR, high-risk road projects. So this is kind of the first step in acknowledging that with the Secretary of Transportation, so.
Move we sign an agreement with KDOT for the east portion of the safety edge road, road, HRR grant project. Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all affairs say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Next item is a letter of engagement for the single audit requirement. We had, in our work session, we had... Pat?
Pat Parker.
Pat Parker explained to us that because of the federal grant money that we've received this year, that it would, federal requires additional single audit for... And we've, we'll have to approve for them to go ahead and do that.
I move we agree with Popper, Gassman...
Yes.
Hoffman. For the audit.
All seconded, all affairs say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried.
You know, she's very thorough, and I like the way that she explained to us what needed to be done and the purpose, and, and then, you know, it's really going to work, and...
She's done a very good job.
Yeah.
And, you know, she had mentioned, too, that the threshold is going to be raised probably in the future from five hundred thousand to a million dollars, and that's, you know, that there's several clients like, like ourselves that are having these single audits, so it's a good kind of housekeeping thing.
Okay.
We'll have more time on this, but I say that we've got a meeting scheduled with Jeff Sheets at the Heritage Center, so... In the meantime, when we get closer, I guess you'll be able to tell us a little bit how much time that would involve and what we're gonna look at, and...
Yeah, probably about as much as, I mean, you can spend the afternoon there if you want to. I know Craig had mentioned he'd like, we wanna look at some of the other buildings that...
Yeah, they got the warehouse open, and Cedar, I believe, stuff, you know, just to kind of shape it in. And then we start there, and then, you know, we leave whatever down to the museum, just so that you kind of... Because I had been in that building for seven or eight years, and it was packed then. And then, just real quick, I think, like I said, we spend the whole day, or, you know, but my opinion, just about an hour. And I'm sure that Jeff would put them all down in order, and that, just, just going, like I said, something to, to, to see the pictures, but to, to look at it and stuff. And I think it's, you know, it's too bad it wasn't in a different location, a little better location than where it is, to be a lot more accessible to people, with kind of hidden treasure. Move adjourned.
Second.
Okay, all affairs say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.